Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, September 24, 2018. Prior to the start of this evening's meeting, I would like to remind anyone in our audience who would like to speak to the city council, either on an item not on the agenda or an item on the agenda, to please fill out a speaker request form there in the back of the room and kindly give those to our city clerk Lynn Fazekas. She will give those, she keeps those in order, so I will try to get you on in the order in which you filled out your speaker request form. And once again, I'd like to ask that you respect the decorum of our meeting and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Having said that, I'd ask our city clerk to call the roll, please.
Jacobson.
Here.
Finnoukken.
Here.
Markwart.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Norreco.
Here.
Verbig.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
A present.
Thank you. I'd like to call our officer on duty tonight, Kelly Sullivan, to come forward, please, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Following on our agenda this evening is the approval of our agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Norrico, seconded by Alderman Favor, that the agenda is approved. Roll call.
Yes.
Markwart.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norreco.
Yes.
Verbig.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. There are no public hearings scheduled for this evening, so we'll move along to Item E, Special Items or Presentations. Our first one is proudly DeKalb, and I understand that someone is here to report on the DeKalb Corn Classic, and that is Cohen Barnes, who I believe chaired that event.
My name is Mayor. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Wow, what an event we had this weekend. I don't know how many of you actually went downtown DeKalb on a Sunday, but between the DeKalb Corn Classic 10K and the Taste of DeKalb, it was just an absolutely fantastic event. So I wanted to share with you a couple of highlights. The DeKalb Corn Classic 10K made up of so many just commute DeKalb citizens, police department, fire department, city staff, everyone really just absolutely rose the occasion to say, you know what, there's a really cool opportunity to highlight all the beauty that we have in our community, and if we all got together and made it happen, along with Northern Illinois University, we could really celebrate DeKalb. And you all know me, I'm all about celebrating and being proud in DeKalb. I want to give you a couple stats and then some posts that are online right now on the feedback that we're getting from the community. But last year, we had 164 people register for the event. This year, we had 371, so we more than doubled the participation in the race, which was absolutely amazing. And if you go online and look at the results of the race, you'll see where people are from. It's like half are from DeKalb and half are from everywhere else. And we heard that from multiple government entities about, we're all about economic development, we're all about student retention, we're all about student attraction, we're all about, we have just an absolutely wonderful community, why not share and celebrate it with everyone out there, as well as keep NIU and keep DeKalb top of mind, whether it's from students coming here to enroll in Northern Illinois University, or a business that's looking to relocate or locate to the community. This is one small way we can get DeKalb on their particular radars. But I gotta read you the responses. This is just Facebook alone. I'm not talking about the people I've met today, I'm not talking about side conversations or the individual emails that I've received today. This is all public on our Facebook page. Amanda Peck, and give me a break here, I should have brought my glasses, so I'm gonna try and read it. I'm 48, so hey. Excellent revised course. Having NIU involved from the student volunteers, marching band, steel drum band, jazz band was amazing. It was great to see the city and NIU come together exclamation point. Jeff McMaster, unbelievable event, well planned, so much fun running. Sherry Krantz, I know Sherry. My new favorite race. Taryn Larson, such a great race route, I enjoyed every minute, well done, DeKalb. Tina Holtz, the race was awesome and really highlighted all the awesome things going on in DeKalb right now. I was honored to be part of it. Honored, right? I mean, that's just incredible. Nate Preston, definitely my new favorite 10K. Jennifer Harrison, I loved everything about this race, the course was great, on-course entertainment was fantastic, and the taste was a great ending. My kids were Lincolns on Lincoln, that was a really cool cheer zone that we did, great time had by all. Such an amazing race, this is Jen Barber, such an amazing race on a beautiful day, love the route, this is my first time running this race, but will definitely be back next year. I don't know who Jennifer or Jen is. Thank you for a wonderful event. Sue Schaefer, love the revised course, such an amazing 10K and well planned out, can't wait for next year, great job. Manuel Molina, great course and great support by the community, favorite part was running through Husky Stadium with the NIU marching band playing. I will definitely be back next year. And Kelly Hamilton, absolutely fantastic route, kudos to all involved in putting this on, best race I have ever run. I tell you, as a race organizer, I knew we had a cool route, I knew the support we had from the police department, the fire department, the city, and NIU, I knew it was gonna be cool. I had no idea the response that I was gonna get. And two of the three top finishers were NIU alum, fierce NIU advocates, they couldn't believe, one of them said, when I ran across Husky Stadium, it was surreal. And they want to engage with NIU to figure out how to get more NIU activity in the suburbs to come out and run the 10K and participate in the Taste of DeKalb. So I don't know who all, I know some of you are down there, I saw Kate down there, it was just fantastic, I saw Tony down there. If you came down during the race or after the race for Taste of DeKalb, what a wonderful representation our community had, and from a student retention and attraction and a business retention and attraction perspective, the economic development participation or the component of this, it couldn't be cooler. So I'm here to say thank you to all of you, all of you, the Egyptian Theater who showed cartoons for the parents that were here with their kids that were running, well, the spouse was running the race, to give them something to do. John Pappas and the involvement he brought from Taste of DeKalb, and all the vendors of Taste of DeKalb, I thought it was just an amazing event, and for me, it made me absolutely proud of DeKalb. So I just wanted to come up here and say thank you for your support, thank you for letting us put this on, and I'm really looking forward to what we're gonna accomplish next year.
Thank you, Cohen.
Thank you. Wow, you guys are awesome.
Part and parcel of the big day yesterday was the Taste of DeKalb, and Scott Zaimet from the Sunrise Rotary, which sponsored that component piece, would like to make just a few remarks about the success of their event, which immediately followed the 10K race. Scott?
Sure, so I'm here on behalf of Kishawaki Sunrise Rotary, and really just want to say thank you to the city, the police department was out there, the park district provided the picnic tables, all the vendors were fantastic, John Pappas and his team, it was really just a great event. We got some constructive feedback, there's some things we'd probably tweak next year, but overall, I mean, it was really just a positive event, the weather couldn't have been better. I think piggybacking on the race was perfect, because we had a ton of runners who not only stayed for hours afterwards, some actually went home and came back with families and things, but our goal was really just to say thank you to the community for a grant that we've given the last two years from our group, and it just couldn't have been better. So we're planning on staying the course and hopefully making it even bigger next year.
Very good.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next special item this evening is the Annie Glidden North Revitalization Plan Task Force update. Alderman Bill Finnoukken from the Second Ward and Alderman Dave Jacobson the First have been our staff liaisons, our council liaisons to this event, along with our staff liaison, Aaron Stevens. And would either of you like to make some kind of a report this evening?
Yeah, I would, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick report, you know, we're entering the phase where the final draft is gonna be coming to council here sometime in the next month to six weeks. So I just want to report, there's a couple of upcoming meetings. Task force will meet this Wednesday evening at 6:30 PM at the County Community Outreach Building on the Annie Glidden Campus. And then on October 10th, and then again on October 15th, there'll be community open meetings at 6:00 PM, and they will be held in the community center in the University Village. So that's really where we're at right now.
Thank you. Once again, I can't thank you and Dave enough for your leadership on this from a council perspective. Number two, under Special Items, Presentations, we have three proclamations this evening. The first is the Illinois Department of Human Rights Fairness and Equality Campaign. I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim that the City of DeKalb is proud to support the Fairness and Equality Campaign in celebration of the Illinois bicentennial, and encourage all residents to recognize and honor the core principles of diversity, inclusion, and non-discrimination in Illinois. I'd like to present this to management intern Walker Stunneke, who has worked very, very hard in preparing some of the material as we dealt with the Department of Human Rights for the state of Illinois. Walker, thanks for your help, and I'll make this presentation to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll present our next proclamation to our fire chief, Eric Hicks, and that is it's Fire Prevention Week, October 7 through 13, 2018. I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim October 7 through October 13, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and urge all the people of DeKalb to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of DeKalb's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2018. So Eric, if you'd come up, please, and I'll present this certificate to you.
I'd say one quick word, Mayor.
You certainly may.
Nobody in this city should go without a smoke detector. I have cases of those at the fire station, if you need one, please give me a call.
Thank you. And I have this certificate here.
Thank you very much for all you do.
And finally, I'm going to present this next certificate to our principal planner for the City of DeKalb, Dan Olson, because it's National Community Planning Month. I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Community Planning Month in DeKalb, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month, and recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners in DeKalb, and extend heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Is Dan with us? Yeah, Dan, come forward, and I'm happy to present this certificate to you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next is a report on the FY 2018 Human Services Funding, and this is an annual report by one of the agencies to whom the City of DeKalb provides some support, and that is for RAMP, Regional Accessibility Mobility Project, and I'm gonna ask Katie Lee to make that presentation. Ms. Lee?
Hi, I'm Katie Lee, I'm the county manager for our DeKalb office. RAMP is the Center for Independent Living. We serve individuals with disabilities and their families to help them be more independent and live the lives that they want. We work with people from birth through all ages, and we serve families who need help supporting their children through school. We also work with adults on their independent living skills so that they can maybe instead of living in a nursing home, live in their own apartments and have the support they need to be able to choose what they want for themselves. We had applied for the grant through the city to support our employment program, which is one of our most important programs. This program is kind of what it sounds like, we work with individuals with disabilities one-on-one to help them get the skills, build their resumes, whatever they may need to be able to become employed and not have to rely on benefits. People with disabilities are at a very high risk for unemployment and poverty, so we definitely see the need, and we're now excited to be able to offer this program over the last year to high school students. So we work, we partner a lot with DeKalb High School, and we go in and we work with students who have a wide range of disabilities, that could be autism, it could be behavioral issues, ADHD, whatever it may be, and we can work with them to prepare them for college, to prepare them for the workforce, and last year, some of the students we worked with actually got jobs. There's a lot of statistics that show that young people who don't get jobs before they're out of high school with disabilities, their chances of getting a job one day are much less than a person without disabilities. So last year, we served 233 people in DeKalb County, 27 of those people received our employment services. On average, about, pretty close to 75% of our consumers come from the city of DeKalb, although we serve all the towns within the county. I'm trying to think of what else. We have a new program that we may be starting up here, that we started in Rockford, it's called Project Search, and it's a really cool program that allows young people in high school that are more high-risk with their disabilities, developmental disabilities, to go work in the community and get internships for 10 weeks, three 10-week round internships. And through that program, then they become employed and don't have to rely on social security to get by. Another program that we offer that is very popular in this area is our Youth Education Advocacy Services, and that's when we partner with parents whose kids have disabilities, we go to the school with them, we help them understand their child's IEP and the services they need to be able to move on after high school and be successful. So we like to think of our services as starting a continuum, where they start with us young and then work with us through adulthood and work their way to self-sufficiency. Do you have any questions about RAMP? A lot of people, even people who have been in DeKalb and known about us for a long time are surprised by all the services we offer, so I always like to open it up.
Are there any questions or comments? A nice presentation, Katie. I was so proud of myself when I remembered off the top of my head what RAMP stood for.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, it's a program that unless folks have someone perhaps who is disabled in their family or in their circle of friends, and may not be aware of, but I think this council is, I think the council is by the very virtue of the fact that we have responded favorably to your funding request, as we have a number of other agencies. So we thank you very much.
And we thank you for that, it really helps, because we do get funding from the state for our employment program, but a lot of the upfront work we do with individuals is not funded. We usually get money once they get a job, but that doesn't take into account the months and months. We maybe work with someone to get them to the point where they're ready to work and confident to go through an interview and all of those things that a lot of us take for granted.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is the annual presentation from the Egyptian Theater, and executive director Alex Nierad will make that presentation. Alex?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Again, my name is Alex Nierad, I'm the executive director at the beautiful historic Egyptian Theater. On behalf of our board of directors, our staff, volunteers, patrons, and donors, I would like to thank the City of DeKalb and the community for their continued support of the theater. The theater has been owned and operated by Preservation of Egyptian Theater, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit charitable organization since 1978. We are currently well underway with our 2018-2019 season, but it wasn't that long ago that we wrapped up our 2017-2018 season, and that is what I'm here tonight to update you on. I am happy to report that we have all positive news to share with you tonight. You have in front of you our annual report, which I'll go through quickly this evening. As you may recall from my update last year, we announced the addition of annual sponsors. With the significant support from First National Bank, Northwestern Medicine, Kishawaki Hospital, Tapala Luna, and Shaw Media, we've been able to dramatically increase our programming and impact on the community. Our season and fiscal year runs July 1st through June 30th. For our most recent season ending in June 2018, we hosted 130 events, 45 film screenings, 38 community events, and 27 touring events. 29 different community groups and organizations utilize the theater for their events. We provided 40 free events to the community and donated over 100 tickets to area nonprofits. We have welcomed 40,086 patrons through our doors from 36 different states and 47 different counties in Illinois, which all contributed to our nearly $2.2 million direct local economic impact. And I just threw out a lot of numbers there, so let me put that into context. 27 touring shows, the previous year, we only had seven. 45 film screenings, the previous year, we had 31. 36 states represented from ticket buyers, previous year, we had 24. 47 counties in Illinois represented from ticket buyers, previous year, we had 37. And our largest increase was the number of patrons that we welcomed through our doors. The last few years, we'd averaged around 30,000 people every single year. This last year, we welcomed over 40,000 people, an increase of 10,000 people in just one year. We ended our fiscal year '18 with a net surplus again. The previous fiscal year, we had a budget of just over $400,000, the highest we had ever had in the history of our nonprofit. Fiscal year '18 had a dramatic increase to 873,000, and our current fiscal year is for the first time over $1 million. The biggest shift from FY '17 to FY '18 was in our earned versus contributed ratio. FY '17 was 17% contributed and 83% earned. FY '18 saw that shift to 30% contributed and 70% earned, which helped us more than double our budget in just one year. In the fall of 2017, we were able to add a new full-time position. We welcomed Janine Holcomb as our new Marketing Communications Director just last fall. This position has allowed us to expand our programming, bring more attention to the Egyptian, and reach further to new audiences. The impact has been substantial, with larger audiences, greater visibility throughout the region, we are better able to communicate our message as a nonprofit, our impact on quality of life, and our rich history here in DeKalb. One of the new marketing initiatives we did was a mass mailing of all of our upcoming touring shows. In the fall of 2017, we mailed to 65,000 households in 17 different zip codes. The spring of 2018, we mailed to 75,000 households in 18 different zip codes. In this most recent mailing this fall, we increased the size of our print piece to accommodate how much programming we were doing. You have the trifold in front of you there, and we mailed that piece to 87,000 households in 22 different zip codes. And we have seen huge returns on this, and we'll be continuing this print piece. Now, on November 11th, 2017, we held a very special Veterans Day concert that was free to the community. With nearly 1,000 in attendance, this was truly a special evening that featured one of the premier military bands, the U.S. Army Field Band and Soldiers Chorus. Thank you again to the mayor for welcoming the audience that evening, DeKalb Boy Scout Troop 33, who presented the colors, and the DeKalb High School Band students who got to join the Army Field Band onstage for a song. December 8th, 2017, we hosted the country a cappella band Home Free in front of a sold-out audience. This was the first completely sold-out concert at the Egyptian in recent history. There literally was not a single seat left in the theater. We had another nearly sold-out show on April 21st, 2018, when we welcomed back Jungle Jack Hannah, along with a number of his animal friends. February 3rd, 2018 marked the second year for the event that we started called Jazz at the Egyptian. This concert featured jazz in progress, the Sycamore High School Jazz Ensemble, the DeKalb High School Jazz Ensemble, and the NIU Jazz Orchestra. The proceeds from this event allowed the Egyptian Theater to donate $500 to each school music program, and we're excited to gear up for the third year in 2019. With a dramatic increase in touring shows, we've been able to bring unique learning opportunities to the community. On October 19th, 2017, we welcomed eight-time Grammy Award-winning group, the Manhattan Transfer. During the day, we took them to NIU where they conducted a masterclass workshop for NIU and DeKalb High School choral students. The students and faculty said it was an amazing opportunity to get to work with these incredible musicians. Grammy nominee jazz drummer Sammy Miller performed with his group, that includes DeKalb High School alum Sam Crittenen, at the Egyptian Theater on April 10th. During the day, they conducted clinics with the middle school jazz bands and the high school jazz ensemble, who also performed with them onstage at the Egyptian that night. On February 10th of this year, we had a very special day. We welcomed the sensational group Gentry, the Gentlemen's Trio, to the Egyptian, and during the day, they were kind enough to make a special visit to the Northwestern Medicine Cancer Center at Kishawaki Hospital, where they performed a free concert for patients and their families. The special concert was standing room only and was one of the largest-attended special events ever at the cancer center. During the afternoon before their show, Gentry utilized the beautiful Egyptian Theater to finish filming their latest music video, "A Million Dreams," from the hit movie The Greatest Showman. They had filmed multiple scenes at other theaters along their tour, but after filming at the Egyptian, they ended up only using the footage from the Egyptian. To date, that video, which was shown here to council a few months ago, has been viewed over 400,000 times on YouTube. On December 10th, 2017, we celebrated the 88th anniversary of the Egyptian Theater with a special showing of "Its Wonderful Life" on 35mm with our carbon arc projectors. This was the first film to be shown on the projectors in over a decade. We had a huge turnout and collected sock donations for Safe Passage Before the Movie. We love being able to partner with other nonprofits in the community to support their needs and bring attention to their organizations as well. As a nonprofit organization, we continue to rely heavily on our amazing volunteers to help keep the theater open and operating. In this past year, we had 76 volunteers contribute over 2,000 hours of service. We could not provide the level of programming we do without every one of our volunteers. We have volunteers at the theater right now as I speak, as we are hosting a free event for DeKalb County Government for a public hearing they are holding on a new ordinance. Through the support of Tiff Funding, we were able to complete some important building projects at the theater. We are continuing to transition where possible, lighting fixtures over to LED for efficiency. We have now completed doing that for some of the auditorium ceiling lights, our exterior security lights, and most recently, some of our stage lighting that use a lot of electricity. We also completed the replacement of all the aisle and step lighting in the auditorium with LED. This not only reduces power consumption, but brings those elements up to current code and replaces a number of sections that stopped working since they were installed back in 1983. We have also started to investigate work on the facade of the theater to compile a scope of work to conduct restoration work on that ornamental facade. The Tiff Funding provided by the City of DeKalb continues to make a substantial impact on preserving this community treasure. this community treasure. Now, if you didn't hear, recently, the Egyptian Theater was named by the State of Illinois Office of Tourism as one of the top 20 architectural treasures in Illinois. The Egyptian was one of two theaters on the list and was ranked the highest at number 11. And if all of that wasn't exciting enough, we are in the middle of our Richard Jenkins film series. Right now, we're going on every Tuesday night with a Richard Jenkins film. The series concludes on Tuesday, October 30th, with the award-winning film, "The Shape of Water." DeKalb native Richard Jenkins will be in attendance at the movie and for a special ticketed reception at 5:00 PM benefiting the Egyptian. We are honored that Richard selected his nine favorite films that he has been in to make up this film series. We invite everyone to join us on Tuesday evenings at 7:00 PM for the remainder of this series and for the final film on October 30th with Richard. We had a thrilling year of entertainment and community impact through a wide variety of events. We welcomed acts from our community, throughout the region, around the U.S., and even overseas. We saw our audience grow extensively this past year. It is exhilarating seeing so many new people experience the splendor of the Historic Egyptian Theater for the very first time. The boost from this past season has propelled the Egyptian towards new opportunities and even further expanded the programming for our 2018-2019 season. We have immense gratitude for our donors, volunteers, sponsors, and patrons who support the Egyptian and allow the legacy of this community, state, and national treasure to continue for generations to come. I encourage everyone to visit our website at EgyptianTheater.org to learn more about the theater and what opportunities are available to get involved to support the theater. And to wrap all of this up, I have a quick sizzle reel of our fall season that's underway right now. Well, it might have frozen, but we'll leave you in suspense. So, you can go to our website, Facebook page, to see the rest of this video, and check out all of the great events that we have coming up this fall. But we just had an absolutely fantastic previous year. I'm thrilled to be able to spend some moments with you tonight to share that with you, and certainly would entertain any questions or comments from council.
Well, that's quite a presentation, I'll tell you that. Any questions or comments of Alex, who has provided the annual report for the Egyptian? Alderman Noriega?
I think we're all impressed and pleased that the Egyptian has had, you know, such a good year. I know we were hoping that the Egyptian could step up in terms of its fundraising and its activities, and I think you have more than fulfilled those expectations. I'm thrilled. I think the city, its citizens should be thrilled that it's apparent the Egyptian will be here and thriving for a long time, because I still need to see a lot of movies there. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Kate. Any other comments or questions of Alex? Alderman Jacobson?
I have often in my history been very critical of the Egyptian Theater and some of the activities going on there. To see the fundraising efforts you guys are doing, to see the shows you guys are putting on, I get the mailers pretty regularly. Obviously, being as a DeKalb resident, the effort is certainly appreciated. Obviously, you guys are seeing it in terms of your numbers. You guys are seeing it in terms of your sponsorship, that it's finally starting to work. And I know a lot of promises were made years ago that I certainly intended to keep you on, and I see it bearing some fruit for you. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Alderman Jacobson. Any further comments or questions? Yeah, Alex, on behalf of so many of us who love the Egyptian Theater, have seen it go through so many stages this past year, sensational, and looking at the offerings and hearing about some of them here tonight makes us all proud. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving along. Number three, approval of the mayor's appointments. I have no appointments this evening. And now we get to item number four, public participation. This particular, thank you, Lynn. This particular segment of our meeting is for those who would like to make presentations or comments on items that are not on the agenda. So, I have a number of those. I'm going to try to keep those in the order. This is all under E4, public participation, and the first speaker is Dwayne Brown.
Mayor, some, some of those are for item G1.
Right. I understand that. Yeah. What we're going to get, first of all, is for the public participation on those items that are not on the agenda. Okay. So, and I have the G1s. Thank you, Lynn. Dwayne?
Dwayne Brown. As the November elections come closer, I want to urge everyone to please vote. The governor's race is especially important considering the issues facing the state, such as pensions. The state and many municipalities are drowning in unsustainable pension costs. Each of the 13 million residents of Illinois is on the hook for $20,000 in unfunded state pension obligations, and an unknown additional amount for local pensions. Local police and fire pension funds are arguably in even worse shape than the state level. Illinois has the worst bond rating in the country, rated BAA III, one step above junk status. Illinois now has the lowest bond rating of any state ever. Some of the highest real estate taxes in the country. We need workers' compensation reform, a better government healthcare system, end gerrymandering, reduce taxes, make Illinois a right-to-work state, legalize marijuana for recreational use, retain our college students, and lower taxes for corporations so we don't lose companies like Elk Grove-based Wine Right Corporation, which just announced plans to build a 320,000-square-foot plant in Hobart, Indiana, which would employ 580 people and cost $26 million to build. Illinois can't afford to put off structural reforms any longer. We need comprehensive reforms without tax hikes now. Illinois has had several governors sentenced to prison, including the following: Otto Kerner for trading racetrack stocks in return for favors, Dan Walker for bank fraud, George Ryan for selling off licenses and contracts, and Rod Blagojevich for trying to sell Obama's Senate seat. Two of the four candidates for governor in Illinois are billionaires. Both Bruce Rauner and J.B. Pritzker have raised about $200 million combined for the election, most from their own bank accounts, making the contest one of the most expensive governor's races in U.S. history. We have children in this state that go to bed hungry. Any candidate that spends this kind of money should be sentenced to 200 hours of community service, serving hot meals to needy children at the candidate's own expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Our next speaker is John Pepas. Hi, John.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council, and public. I'm here tonight to share my 20 years' worth of experience with TIF. My first experience was 20-plus years ago at the Harvester Hotel, Motel on Sycamore Road, on Bethany and Sycamore Road. At that time, excuse me, my TIF request was $200,000. It was approved. It was a five-year deal tied into sales tax. In other words, if the sales tax didn't generate more than $200,000, I had to pay back the difference. Five years were up. I get a phone call from Jennifer Dedrick at that time. She says, "John, I got good news and bad news. The good news is, the property has generated $105,000 in property tax. I'm, I'm sorry, in sales tax. The bad news is, you're upside down $95,000." I said, "Jennifer, I'll be there in the morning with a cashier's check." I walk down to Castle Bank, got a cashier's checks for $95,000, paid back the balance, the difference. The city, the city attorney at that time released the mortgage. That's a good example when TIF is used properly. My second experience with TIF was Smalls Furniture Store. It was $328,000. That's the place that houses Elwood's Steak and Fish House. Elwood, at that time, was 200,000, $328,000. Elwood's Steak and Fish House today generates about $50,000 a year annually for the restaurant bar tax. The last four years has generated over $200,000. If you divide $200,000 into $328,000 TIF, it's about 60% a year return, not to mention $68,000 a year in property tax. When I took over the property, was only generating $22,000 in property tax. My third and fourth experience with TIF is Quornstone, DeKalb, and Plaza, DeKalb. In my opinion, I think that's the best investment the city has made the last 50 years. Those properties are going to be generating property tax forever and ever. Yes, I have benefited from TIF. So did the city. So did the rest of the taxing bodies. So did the tradesmen in the community. Everybody benefited, and that's what TIF is made for. So, when TIF is used properly, everybody benefits, and there's no downside. So, the last 20, 20-plus years, there's over $200 million in TIF has been used. Can you imagine if $200 million were used the, the way that I just got done explaining? $200 million, can you imagine how South Forestville would have looked? Or the rest of the downtown DeKalb would have looked? But I'm not smart enough to figure that out. I'll leave that up to the experts. What I do know, what I do know is, TIF is used properly, you cannot beat it. It's the best commercial engine we can have in the community. When it comes down to generating sales tax revenue, positive growth, so someday, the average home taxpayer catches a break. So, that's what I gotta say. I hope, moving forward, we create a new TIF, and if this administration makes, makes a commitment that the TIF would be used properly, I think there's only one way, and that's to win. We're not going to look backwards. I can go on all night long and pointing fingers, but I chose not to do that. But there's only positive results when TIF is used properly, and I have all the coffins in the world that this administration will use TIF properly, and hope everybody gets their heads together and move forward.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. You're a couple of seconds over, so I
I apologize.
I'm glad, too, that you didn't take the entire evening to do that. So, okay.
And last night, yesterday, that Taste of DeKalb was amazing. My family and helpful couple of other people who did raise $1,500 for Safe Passage. It was a great event. It was a family event, and everybody survived. Nobody got drunk. It was a great event.
Well, thank you. I am reminded that I have been, in the past, done this before, so I am going to do this. I am going to read a public comment from somebody who could not be here, and I'm going to read this entire email, and I'm going to try to keep it within three minutes. This is from Ruth Scott, an email that was sent at 6:24 this evening. Molly, this email is from Derek Van Buur. He wants it read during public comment. Not sure if Lynn or the mayor saw it since it came in at 6:03 this evening. And no, we did not see it. I did not see it. This message is from Derek Van Buur, and he says, "Please make sure that this statement is read into public comments." Please read into public comments. "The race committee did not outreach to the people impacted. No outreach to the public bodies impacted. No thought to the public. Closing First Street, Normal Road in Annie Glidden time. No reimbursement to the public. When did the race committee decide on the course? Did the city post temporary handicap parking spaces since they took up the parking spaces in Van Buur Plaza? The bike trails were not to be closed to the public per the park district. It was a complete mess on Sunday morning. NIU police closing northbound traffic on Annie Glidden at Lincoln. Total confusion. You should take a look at all the churches that were impacted on Sunday. The city had initially intended to block in Miller Avenue, Miller Court, Thornbrook Road, Linden Place north of Rolf Road, and Park Avenue north of Rolf Road by closing the bridge at Miller Avenue, Woodley, and Lucinda. We are not on the race course. The city did the same thing for NIU homing 2014. It makes you wonder out how our city public officials and city staff. Also, you should ask yourself about the liability exposure that the race placed on the school district and park district. You done this reading for John Ray, so I expect the same. Signed, Derek." That is the final comment under those who wish to make a comment under items not on the agenda. We do have a number that are on the agenda tonight. Moving right along to item F on on the agenda tonight. That's our consent agenda. For those of you who are aware of our council meetings, we do usually read the consent agenda, and we approve it by omnibus vote unless any items are asked to be removed from the consent agenda. If not, I would read these and then ask for a motion to approve them. Consent agenda, number one, approval of city council minutes. Minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of August 27, 2018. B, minutes of the regular city council meeting of August 27, 2018. Number two, receive and file. A, accounts payable and payroll through September 24, 2018, in the amount of $3,705,243. B, investment and bank balance summary through July 2018. C, year-to-date revenues and expenditures for the general fund and water fund through July 2018. And number three, resolution 2018-128 authorizing the City of DeKalb user roles for all federal and state transit grants. I'd entertain a motion to improve the consent agenda. So moved. Second.
Was that you, Mike?
Yes. It's been moved by Alderman Verbic and seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mark Clark?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Adai?
Thank you. We move along now to item G, items for separate action. Our number one, ordinance 2018-J-047 authorizing a zoning map amendment from the LC Light Commercial District to the PDC Plan Development Commercial District, and approval of a planned development plan for a Home Two Suites by Hilton Hotel, Northern Illinois Hotels LLC, southwest corner of Knowles Avenue South, and South Annie Glidden Road. Second reading, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman Noriko. I'm going to ask our principal planner, Dan Olson, to speak to this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The request was passed on first reading at the September 10 council meeting by vote of six to two. The motion to waive the second reading failed. It was vote of five to three, required a supermajority. So, we have second reading on tonight, and requires a simple majority for approval. There's no changes to the plans or the development agreement. Staff would recommend approval of the ordinance as presented.
Prior to taking action on this tonight, we like to give those folks who have indicated a desire to speak to this, and we have several of those tonight. The first one is Philip Simpson. Good evening.
Mr. Patel, it said this is the only location that he's considering. I was wondering why that is. There are other locations that are currently available. There are other locations currently available in the city that would suit it better. I live in the Knowles. Everybody that I've spoken to in the Knowles and in other neighborhoods surrounding do not want the hotel. We've all thought about what are the pros, what are the cons? None of us can come up with the pros that impact our neighborhoods. There are a lot of cons, too many to go over with at the present time. Mr. Patel also said that the Hilton has very specific guidelines about the property location, and I was wondering, and so was other people, what those guidelines are. Nobody's ever spoken what those guidelines may be. And he's also stated that he's not looked or considered at any of the properties in the city, so how would we know if any of the properties that are available would fall under the guidelines for him to purchase those properties as well? Living in there, in the Knowles, getting out in the mornings and coming home in the evenings, the traffic is very horrendous, especially with all the traffic from northern. And the entrance in and out of this hotel that they're proposing building is in the neighborhood. It's not off of Annie Glidden, it's on Knowles Drive. In the past, we had talked, when the first hotel went up, about adding a stoplight at one of the entrances, and at the time then, they found that there was no money for that, and two, it wasn't practical. So, I'm kinda curious as to what other things they have thought about since our meeting at the Hamptons, when everybody in the neighborhoods met there. I yet have found one person that said, "That sounds like a great idea to build a hotel." I don't believe it, and neither does anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Our next speaker is Bessie Chronopoulos. Yeah, pull that mic down, Bessie.
Thanks. I am a little shorter than most people. I'm here to urge the council to please retain the status of this property as is, light commercial. People invested in homes knowing that this was light commercial, not a higher classification. They invested in these homes. These are the people the council has wanted to, or has said they have wanted to attract, single-family homes where people want to live and thrive in the community. There's some questions about the parking. There's some questions about, and I think somebody from council may have asked this before, about the guarantee of this facility remaining as is, as a multi-hotel facility. Should the fad ever change? Can somebody come back and change it to apartments? Oh, sure, they can. You betcha they can. It'll, just like somebody is coming back now to change what this originally was intended to be, light commercial. It's been said by our staff and in the presentations that the DeKalb Park District and the Visitor Center support a similar project. I'd like to see some kind of a market analysis on that, as to how much we need a facility like this type of a facility in the area. Though these two entities may have supported something because of the fact that they're in the business that they're in, they're exposed to hearing people coming from out of town, and so on and so forth, they do not support this project being there at that particular location. And I'm not so sure that the Hilton people are objecting to this. I need some proof of that. I don't believe that for a second. That's what our staff has said, and that's what the developers have said. I don't buy that for a minute. There are many other facilities right off of Schnucks. There's also some other places that could, that are blighted areas that we would do well by getting rid of and investing in something like this, if indeed this is the type of facility that we need. This project benefits only a handful of people. It does not benefit the neighbors who live there who have invested in there. I don't know how many of you have actually, I've driven by there several times, and I've taken some friends there to show them, and they said, "Where is this thing going to be? This four-story thing, where is it gonna be? Is it right there?" They go, "You're kidding me." I don't know if every one of you have driven by there or walked that area. Imagine, a four-story, huge building in that small space. Kate, I believe you mentioned the other day, and this kinda prompted me to thinking, and again, in the spirit of the National Community Planning Month, and how sensitive we should be to good quality planning. You mentioned something about should the council be expected to know where facilities should be located? Oh, you bet. The council darn well better have a vision of how they want the community to develop. That's part of the responsibility of a council, in working in conjunction with a viable plan commission. Over the last few years, our plan commission has not been totally trained as much. You know as well as I do that in the last four years under the Ray Garo administration, that the plan commission hasn't met that often. And they have not been given opportunities to train in the fine-tuning of planning and good planning and development. This is a very important part of the community.
You're well over your three minutes now, Bessie.
Well, maybe half a minute more, if you don't mind.
What's that?
And, Mr. Mark Clark, I'm sorry that you think that talking is too burdensome for the council. I, you mentioned that last time. I don't mean to burden the council, merely want to add as much to your knowledge from my experience as possible, so that, to help you make the right decisions. And, Mr. Larson, you brought us a nice development, you and Mr. Mason. You've done well because of the people who have invested in your development. Don't turn your back on them now. Don't do this. This is wrong.
Thank you, Bessie. Our next speaker is Steve Brown.
Good evening. My name is Steve Brown. I live at 1231 Mason. I'm the second house on the east side of Mason Street. I back right up to the park. I have a view of what happens there often. I see the people who use the park. I see the children that come and go from there. I see the cars that park on the side of the road. It's not unusual to open my back door and have three or four deer in my backyard. My neighbor has three apple trees. They seem to like them. They seem to like my lilies, too. But, there's a lot that goes on there, and for anybody to say that this is not going to adversely affect that area, you would be wrong. You can just watch, the other day, there were a couple of trucks there, and they were doing seal coating on the park trail. And yet had people running in circles, because people, they were parked on the side of the road, and people had to avoid them. It's nothing like the traffic you're gonna have for a hotel. To say that during construction, that you're gonna be able to do construction safely, with the size of the vehicles you need to try and pull through them islands, not gonna happen. To just ignore the dangers that will exist there is wrong, and it could even, it could be really catastrophic. The area that the engineer says they're gonna cut out, that's not long enough for a semi-truck pulling a load of stone to fit in. If he's there, he can't get in, and somebody pulls a left-hand turn like they like to quickly from Annie Glidden on the South Knowles, you're looking at a potential disaster, because his truck is gonna stick into that lane. Traffic isn't the only reason there. It's on a flood plain. Why would you wanna even put a four-story hotel, another one, on a flood plain? I get a good view of what happens when it rains there. That lake over by, behind me doesn't normally overflow, although I have seen it go over twice, and I've only lived there 14 years. I know that other lakes have gotten quite high recently. I've seen the flooding on Taylor Street. And I'm sure some engineer told them when they built them apartments in that there, that would never be a problem, the ones that are along the river. I've seen them go underwater three times. If that's a hundred-years flood, I should be 300 years old. We have to be, we have to look and see what we're doing. I sent out an email to most of you, Alderman. Alderman, Mike, I apologize. Yours got sent back to me. For some reason, I didn't type it in right. My apologies. I hope the rest of you received it and were able to read it. I appreciate the mayor getting back to me on the email that I sent him, and I appreciate Mr. Verbic taking the time to have these meetings. So, and I do hope you, Alderman, that received it, had a chance to read it. There are some points well thought out there, I believe. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about this thing with the Hilton people. I have had the opportunity to talk to two people from the Hilton. One was somebody who worked for Kirsten something or Wells in the Public Relations Department. Kirsten was in Singapore, so this woman called me back, and she said, "We really can't speak about it, because you're not on our radar yet. You're not in our book. We don't have that hotel listed yet. So, I'm sorry, any concerns you have, if you call me in a month, I'll be able to help you then." I said, "I think a month's gonna be a little late."
You're well over three minutes now, Steve.
Okay, let me go to the last guy then. I talked to Chris Brock. He's the head of development and planning for this area. And I brought up concerns that I had about this, and I asked him if he had guidelines, and he said they knew of the property, they understood what it was. And I asked, "But do you have concerns?" He said, "We don't have any concerns. They're not our concerns." I started to list my concerns. He said, "You don't understand. We're the franchiser, they're the franchisee. It is their responsibility to float this. It goes back to you." They didn't say it's not their problem. When I asked them, and I said, "Is this, you're saying that this isn't your problem?" He said, "No, not our responsibility. They pick an area, they get it approved, they pay us the money, you put a hotel in."
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Okay, we still have a couple of people who would like to speak to this. Pramit Patel.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Mr. Olson did a great job explaining how this project meets the UDO standards, but I kinda wanna just talk about the project as a whole. You know, I'm a NIU graduate, class of 2000. When I look back at the last 18 years, I've noticed that other small collegiate towns have experienced a lot more growth than DeKalb has. And I'm surprised that DeKalb didn't have its first non-economy hotel till 2014, and that surprises me considering the number of corporations that are located in DeKalb. Nestle, 3M, Monsanto, Goodyear, Target, Johnson Controls, Penduit, Ideal Industries, and these are just some, and the list keeps growing. And not only are these corporations in DeKalb, they're also expanding in DeKalb. Ideal Industries completed a new $18 million manufacturing plant. 3M opened its new $40 million distribution center. Target completed a $50 million distribution center as well. Now, what's happening is, when the Hampton gets filled up with 80 rooms, these employees that are working at these locations, they, they're not, you know, they're looking for their Hilton points, Marriott points. They're not gonna stay at a Super 8 or Baymont. So, they end up going to neighboring cities and eating at those restaurants, filling up their gas at those restaurants, and actually contributing to those cities' economy. All right? And what we're trying to do is bring that revenue back into DeKalb. What we're proposing is an upper-mid-scale extended-stay hotel. And it's a service that no other city in a 30-mile radius provides, so DeKalb is gonna stand unique in that. And we're doing all of this without requesting any TIF money, any tax abatements, and we're using local banks to fund this project. What we're gonna do is keep as much of the growth that a development like this brings within the city, and you have to consider the benefits that it brings, right? $350,000 a year in tax revenue, with $140,000 of that going to the school district, without any undue burden on the school district, 20 to 30 new jobs, and the possibility of enticing other companies and manufacturing plants to consider DeKalb for their next location. Now, I hear the biggest complaint is that it's a light commercial lot, and they've never envisioned a four-story or 45-foot-tall building. But the UDO specifically states that light commercial without any special use allows a maximum of 45 feet. So, I understand that they're shocked, because this lot's been empty for 20 years, but light commercial has always allowed a four-story or 45-foot-tall building, without any special use cases. But also, if you're considering light commercial, if you're buying a house next to a light commercial lot, you have to consider light commercial special use. Hotels are allowed in light commercial special use, right? So, the fact that we're changing from light commercial to planned development isn't the reason that a 45-foot-tall building is allowed, or a hotel is allowed. It actually gives a city more control over the development and operations of this. That's a benefit to the city and the residents, and it's actually a burden on the developer and the operator, because we have a strict set of rules that we have to adhere to now, based on this planned development. Right? DeKalb, also, DeKalb is not the only city, or the first city, to have a hotel located in a subdivision or next to a house. Just to name two examples here that I quickly found.
Yeah, you're well over your time.
I'm sorry, I'm almost done. Two examples, here's one in Fond du Lac, Wisconsin, where the hotel is neighboring seven houses, shares a property line with seven houses. There's also one in Lake Geneva, where it's directly across the street from houses. So, I urge you council members to weigh the pros and cons of what a development like this can bring to the city, and the type of revenue it can generate both directly and indirectly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Our final speaker tonight on this particular item is Michael Max Maxwell.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Max. I'm at 594 Persimmon Street, which is actually in the Knowles. To qualify this, I sit on the City Planning and Zoning Commission, and I did several weeks ago vote in favor of this. I felt that I was fairly well-educated on it. fairly well-educated on it at the time, and in my, in the interest of the city and the tax money that would bring in, the information that I got from people at Northern about the need for something like this, even though I was in the subdivision, I voted for it. And unfortunately, I think I've done a little more due diligence since then, and some things that I probably should've done initially, anyway. I was walking my dog the other night, and it happened to dawn on me that I needed to actually walk this property and physically look at where it was at. I came back with a launcher, and I sat in about eight different locations that would be impacted by it, not only from a traffic standpoint, but from a visual standpoint, the proximity to the house, houses that it would actually sit against. And the more I thought about it in size and mass, I reconsidered what I had initially thought. I don't believe it belongs there, unfortunately. There are other places in DeKalb that that's available. And I think one of the things that immediately comes to mind for people is that because of the proximity to 88, that it has great access. But as an extended-stay hotel, that's not an attraction to somebody that's simply passing by along the highway. That's not something that they would participate in. With that said, I recently realized some of the other possibilities of the places that it could be put. And I, and I do agree with a lot of the people that had said that it does impact our neighborhood. And again, me being part of that neighborhood, my initial thought was, you know what, it's more important to the city as a whole and to provide the services that we need within the city. But again, having sat in these locations and understanding the mass of this in comparison to the surrounding area, and to some degree, the traffic impact, too. I initially was perfectly willing to put up with it, knowing that these people might come and go once or twice a day, but potentially, if you have 80 rooms and 80 cars coming in and out of that individual little section right there, again, I sat there for about two and a half hours watching people go by, and it would be kind of a burden to people. I mean, I'm not saying that you'd have to worry about, you know, perhaps sitting there for more than three to four minutes. That's just typical of anywhere in the area. But I do ask that the City Council reconsider this. I think I was in error without judging on all the facts at the time. To Mr. Mark Hartz's point, I absolutely agree. We do discuss things to death at times. But this is definitely something that I think should have been discussed further, in more depth. And obviously, the people of my area who disagreed with me initially, I'm not saying I'm complete at that point because I would love to see it somewhere else. I do believe Mr. Patel would do a wonderful job managing the property. I welcome Hilton for its brand equity and the service that it would give to the community. But I now believe this isn't the proper place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Max. Okay, that completes the public participation on this particular agenda item. And now, we have had a motion and a second. I would like to open it up for any council discussion. Alderman Verbic.
Thanks to everyone that's voiced your opinions. The opinions are very valued by this council, by this mayor. Much of what the concerns have been shared cover what I have to say tonight. But I will say this, that the sixth ward of DeKalb is already strapped with a hotel that has been offline for a number of years. So what I would ask is council to consider more binding language that would prevent this property from becoming an abandoned hotel or something that's not desired by the city. With that, what I'm asking is that if this property were to lose its Hilton franchise, that the developer would agree to return it to Grass Seed, the way that it states now. Instead of when they lose their franchise, may it be 20 years, may it be 30 years, and if council supports it, I hope they don't lose their franchise, of course. But we have to have some protections in place to protect the single-family homeowners of that area. And the language that we've come up with thus far does not do that.
Thank you, Alderman Verbic. Any other comments? Alderman Faver.
So I was originally in favor of the, of the hotel. I, I know that the city needs the hotel. My biggest concern, if you wanna go back to the site plan view, is just the...
The area or site plan?
Uh, that's fine. To me, the biggest concern, if, if they could have an access off of Annie Glidden and not access from the subdivision, I would be more in favor of this. I know there's been some, I think a little bit of exemptions or whatever. We've got a couple parking spaces still in that 50, in the 50-foot area, correct, from the backup material. There's still two parking spaces within the, so we're kinda shoehorning it into the, into the lot. I know that's being picky, but, you know, obviously, if I lived in the neighborhood, if it had an entrance off of Annie Glidden, I think I'd be much more in support of it. I think the, the entrance coming in right out of the subdivision is really a little more than I think I can ask someone else to bear.
On the issue of the access to Annie Glidden, that's was an issue that was looked at earlier. The site was laid out and designed for access off of Knolls Avenue South. There's a, the Annie Glidden North-South corridor standards approved several years ago before this area was built out, had a restriction regarding a minimum spacing between access points of 660 feet. So it restricted access points along that whole corridor. And the distance, I believe, from Hampton Inn, access to Knolls Avenue South is around 700 feet. So there's no room for an access into that. In addition, it would be, our engineers looked at that, would be unsafe in terms of an access too close to the existing one on Knolls Avenue South. It would be unsafe for motorists. A connection from the Hampton Inn to this site is not designed that way. The Hampton Inn was not laid out that way. It would go over a floodplain, a bike path, the same, the Park District property, which they likely would not agree to. So access was designed off of Knolls Avenue South with the landscape islands and the cut in between. And they are modifying that to take all the high-growth landscaping out and put low-growth landscape in there, adding a turn lane into that site to make it safe. There's also a right-out-only access there, so cars go to the Annie Glidden and will not go back through the subdivision. So it really wasn't feasible on an engineering standpoint and meeting the policies of the city to add an access to Annie Glidden directly into the site.
Thank you, Dan. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion on the floor and a second to that motion. Michael, did you have something?
Well, it seems when I talk, I get yelled at through email and other various forms of conversation. So it's with trepidation that, I guess, I venture to speak out in certain forms. I look at this as, from a couple of different viewpoints, and I look at it as an economic engine. Property taxes from the facility equals about 30 houses. So theoretically, that would lower all of our property taxes to a certain extent, maybe not to a large amount. If everybody kept their property tax levies the same, which we know that they don't, but a greater portion of that increase by all the levying districts would be eaten up by that hotel. I understand the concern about having a building in that spot that would be for any commercial use. On the other hand, I just can't get my head wrapped around the fact that, that there's probably nothing that would satisfy everybody going in there. I think that any property that, any type of business that goes in there is gonna increase traffic. The way the whole corridor is designed, that, that access to it has to come out onto Knolls. Overall, for the city, to a great extent, I think it's more of a benefit than a negative. And I guess that's what I'm looking at in that
Thank you, Mike. Alderman Norrico.
I have heard and read the comments of the individuals, the homeowners in that area. And I'm a homeowner also, and I think about, you know, how would I feel in that situation? And I would certainly have concerns. But I'm responsible, as a council member, for thinking about what would be to the greatest good, or the greater good. And I believe that we are in a financial position and an economic development position such that we cannot turn our back on reasonable offers. Is it the best solution? I'm not prepared to say that. But it is certainly a very reasonable solution and position.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion on the floor, a second, no further discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbic?
No.
Faver?
No.
Jacobson?
No.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markhor? Smith?
Yes.
Five-I?
Motion passes. Okay, moving on. Item number two, Ordinance 2018-049, authorizing a fire suppression system agreement with Red Door LLC to provide a loan from the city's water fund for the installation of Greek sprinklers at 924 Greenbrier Road and amending the fiscal year-end December 31, 2018 FY 2018 budget. This is first reading. Entertain a motion.
Sell move.
It's been moved by Alderman Faver.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Norrico. Speaking of this item, Community Development Director Joellen Charlton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The attached ordinance, as the mayor indicated, authorizes the execution of an agreement with Red Door LLC and a budget amendment in order to provide a loan amount from the city's water fund in the amount of $37,425. It's being brought forward to you at this time as a follow-up to a conversation that you had back on May 14th, when you approved an ordinance that amended Chapter 14 of the city code relating, related to Greek housing fire safety. As part of that discussion, we asked council to provide consensus direction on some of the questions that had been asked of the people that were gonna be funding these new projects, and whether the city would entertain a loan from its city water fund, and if so, what some of those terms might be. The council was presented with some options to either fund 80% of the total loan cost for each project, or 50%. The consensus direction or the head nods we had at that meeting was 80%. And at that time, we also talked about a five-year loan term at a 5.25% interest rate. The intent of providing that loan would be to secure that loan with a special service area financing tool. I know there, we talked a little bit about whether it would be required as a backup, or whether the entities would want to access that, just as a matter of right. And I think we're gonna provide that option, but from what I've heard, most people are interested in having that special service area, excuse me, option open to them. So our intent would be to go through this and all of the remaining entities that would be interested in this type of program, and then come back at a later time with that special service area. But I will note that this agreement draft does include a provision in the agreement that says that the owners, by, by agreeing to this, would not be able to object to the special service area, which is important because we wouldn't wanna go into an agreement with that and then not have their agreement because they could later choose not to participate. It is also important to note, I think when we brought this to you the last time, we had a dozen or so other properties that were interested in it. And at that point, the total cost of all of those improvements was somewhere over about a half a million dollars. We did send out notices to the entities to remind them that this was gonna be subject to prevailing wage, and we wanted to make sure everybody understood and refined their proposals if necessary because as part of prevailing wage, there are additional requirements that need to be met as part of that system. This is the first owner who has responded to this and expressed interest in this program. We have sent draft documents to all of the other owners and would, as they become available to us, bring those back. I was kinda hoping we'd get a bunch of them at the same time. So I will reach out to the rest of the owners and try to confirm when the rest of them will be coming back. I also mentioned that we, we did notify them of the prevailing wage rate. The other thing I would like to note, that because this ordinance does include a budget amendment, its approval does require a two-thirds vote of the council. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Alderman Fanouken.
Hey, Joanne, maybe this is a question more correctly directed at Chief Hicks, but how many houses still need to be sprinkled in that area to meet the 1-1 deadline?
Most of them have either started their work or are still in the permitting phase. So we had one house that actually finished it last year on Blackhawk. So that one's completed. But the 12 or 13 that we had on the docket in your May meeting, none of them have been completed.
So it's quite apparent that if anybody else wants to get involved in this loan program, they better speak pretty quickly.
Correct.
If the work's gonna be done by when? Don't we have till December 31st?
January 1st is the date, but as you might recall, in the ordinance that was approved, there are some capabilities for them to request extensions if necessary. We're gonna need to see that they have active contracts in place and that work is underway. We're not gonna be forgiving to somebody who's ignored the entire process and comes to us in the middle of December and says, "Help me."
Okay, good. Alderman Fagan.
You said on the loan agreement that they cannot back away from the SSA. Why don't we, is SSA in place now, or shouldn't we have an SSA in place before we start loaning our money?
It's a condition of the agreement. So once, once they enter into the agreement, they will be required to not object to the SSA. And I think we, we are obligated, I don't see Dean in the room, but we are obligated to, there he is, we're obligated to make sure that we have that in place by a certain time for the tax collection season.
So that really becomes a chicken or the egg issue.
Right.
In the absence of this agreement, we wouldn't approve the SSA. There's not a need to levy the taxes. The property owners, the city has the unilateral authority to create the SSA unless the property owner of record objects, or 51% of the property owners have record object. With their waiver of objection, they're contractually obligated to this funding. Moreover, through the agreement, they're contractually obligated without regard to the SSA for the funding itself. The intent was to confirm that council was supportive of this through actually approving the loan agreement, and we would then immediately proceed towards creation of the SSA. There is a publication notice and a mail notice that have to occur and a waiting period before you can hold a public hearing with regard to the creation. But we are queued up and ready to go forward on that if council should choose to approve this.
Okay. And then, on your loan agreement, if they transfer the property, sell the property, does that money have to be paid back at the time of sale?
This does not have an acceleration on sale clause, in part because the SSA is there as an absolute guarantee. The SSA takes priority over mortgages or any other obligation on the property.
All right. Let me ask you this. Everybody has to agree on the SSA, 51%, right?
It's kind of the inverse of that. If, there's no consent required, but if 51% or more of the owners object, they can prevent it from being created. Because of the... Because of the boundaries and configuration of these, they're each going to have their own separate SSA, so it is by property.
Right. But let's flip it back to saying, okay, property ship, the property ownership changes, can they come back and say, "We've got more than 51%, we want out, we don't want the SSA anymore." Can they do that?
No, because any successor owner would be bound by this agreement. The agreement indicates this binding on any successor owner as assigned to anyone else who takes an interest in the property.
Okay.
Thank you. Alderman Verbic.
Where I was initially opposed to this, I wanted to thank you. Great work getting this tightened up and cleaned up, so I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Is Alderman Jacobson, has he recused himself because?
Has recused himself.
Yes, okay.
Yes, because he's a property owner in that.
Right, that's what I understand, right. Okay. Any other comment or questions of Joellen? We have a motion on the floor and a second, and I would ask for a roll call, please.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwhort?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Should we, this is going to be the first reading, right?
That is the first reading, yes.
All right, so as long as the senators agree, I'd like to make a motion in the way of the second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, moved by Alderman Fagan, seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is this to waive second reading or to, and to approve the ordinance?
And to approve the ordinance, right. So we're waiving second reason, reading, and approving the ordinance. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson has gone. Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwhort?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving right along, item number three. If we can get David back into the room. Ordinance number 2018-050, amending Chapter 32 business regulations as it pertains to pawnbrokers within the city of DeKalb. This is first reading. I'd entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Markwhort, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Speaking of this item is City Attorney Dean Frieders and Police Commander Bob Riddell. Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to steal Dan Olson's thunder a little bit and jump ahead one item and indicate that the next action item before you, item number four, relates to the property at 1786 to 1792 Sycamore Road. That's a multi-unit commercial strip center owned by Mr. Dave Franzine, who is present with us tonight in the back row. Mr. Franzine has identified that that property is underutilized and has been for some period of time. He came forward with a proposal to utilize a portion of the property as a, as a pawnbroker shop. We met with Mr. Franzine, we met with the proposed proprietor of that establishment. The proposed operator owns a number of pawn shops, including successful ones in the city of Naperville. And we started looking at our pawn ordinances to see if we were going to have that kind of facility returned to the city of DeKalb, what updates would be recommended to city code. There are two fundamental updates that we're recommending with regard to the pawnbroker ordinance, or Chapter 32, which relates to business regulations. These would pertain only to traditional pawn shops, not to a resale shop. I'm going to talk about one, and Commander Riddell is going to address the second. The first is our current city code imposes a limit of 3% per month on the lending fee, the interest rate essentially that you can charge on a pawn. But then separately, it imposes a fixed one-time fee limit of not more than 5% to 12%, depending on the value of the item that you're pawning. That's a, in comparison to state law, in comparison to what's permitted on the Illinois Pawnbroker Regulation Act, that's a very, very restrictive prohibition on the, the amounts that can be charged when you pawn an item. In comparing that to other communities that have successful pawn shops, who weren't able to find any in the state of Illinois, that impose that kind of one-time fee limit, what we're suggesting with regard to the fees is simply to follow the state act. The Pawnbroker Regulation Act specifies in it both a maximum interest rate which can be charged, and a maximum amount which can be charged as a storage or recurring monthly fee. And it's based on a percentage of value of the item in question that's being pawned. There's also under the act a very clear requirement of a written disclosure explaining any fees that you may be charged and how they're calculated. So anyone who enters into this transaction will have a very clear understanding of it, and the treatment they receive, the maximum charges they'd be subject to would be consistent and uniform throughout the state, instead of having something more localized. And I will hand it over to Commander Riddell.
Thank you, Dean. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. I wanted to be reviewing some of the proposed requirements needed and followed by a pawnbroker, and the benefits reporting their transactions to Leeds Online. The amendments proposed in Chapter 32, if appro, or if approved, will require a pawnbroker to operate and maintain a computer system with internet access and have the ability to photograph for the purpose of the electronic reporting to Leeds Online. A pawn broker will be required to document the identity of the person who pawned the item. The pawnbroker will be required to give the seller an itemized receipt. The pawnbroker will be required to photograph and accurately document each item being pawned or sold. The pawn broker will then upload each transaction to Leeds Online. Leeds Online is the nation's largest online investigative system that allows retailers to report their transactions to law enforcement. This online system assists law enforcement catching criminals and recovering items that were stolen. Leeds Online has 42,000 law enforcement agencies utilizing their system. There are 22,000 businesses that report to Leeds Online. In Illinois, there are 278 law enforcement agencies utilizing Leeds Online, and 586 businesses reporting their transactions. Leeds Online has assisted us at the police department in solving many cases. Most recently, it has helped us solve the DeKalb Cornerstone burglary. In that burglary, unknown suspects entered the building during the construction phase and stole contractors' tools. They went in there, took all the tools. At the point, and at the time we started this investigation, we had zero leads. So our investigators got on Leeds Online, we started looking for tools that were very similar to the items taken during the DeKalb Cornerstone burglary. And in Aurora, in Naperville, we found a suspect who was pawning items very similar to the ones that were stolen here in DeKalb. That lead led us to the suspects. We then made two arrests, and we recovered a lot of the items that were stolen from the contractors at the DeKalb Cornerstone burglary. So that was a brief summary of some of the proposed requirements that pawnbrokers have to follow. It is also a brief summary of some of the benefits, reporting their transaction to Leeds Online. If you have any questions in regards to the proposed changes to Chapter 32, I'm here to answer any questions, or Dean Frieders.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions or comments regarding this? I think the background information provided pretty explicitly spelled these, this out, too. So we have a motion on the floor, we have a second to the motion, and I would ask for a roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwhort?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Motion passes.
I'd like to move to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we waive second reading on this ordinance and approve the ordinance. Roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwhort?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Motion passes. Now we'll move along to item number four, Ordinance 2018-051, authorizing a zoning map amendment from the GC, General Commercial District, to the PDC Plan Development Commercial District for 1786-1792 Sycamore Road. Dave Franzine. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Markwhort. Now asking, I'm going to ask Dan Olson, our principal planner, to speak to this motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As a follow-up to this past action that the councilists took regarding the ordinance for pawnbrokers, the request is here for a rezoning from general commercial to planned development commercial for this property on Sycamore Road. You see the subject site on the monitor there. The building was constructed in 1998. It currently contains on the north end a video gaming establishment called Charlie's, and located in the 2,000 square foot building. The rest of the building's taken up by Baxton Woodman Engineering Consulting Firm. The proposed pawn shop would like to take up 2,000 square feet between Charlie's and Baxton Woodman. They're reducing their square footage over in the building. Pawn shop would like the potential to expand in the future, too. The pawn shop is a special use currently in the general commercial district, as is a video gaming establishment. So the building owner would like to have the ability to move the pawn shop from a special use to a permitted use, also have the ability to keep a video gaming establishment in that location in the future. Now Charlie's went in there before the ordinance the city passed in March of 2017 that established video gaming establishments as a special use in our general commercial, like, commercial districts. One of the restrictions back at that time was that the video gaming establishments had to be at least 500 feet away from each other. There are two other video poker, video gaming establishments within 500 feet. They also were established prior to the ordinance in 2017. Lucky Poker at 1812 Sycamore Roads, about 220 feet away from Charlie's, and also Lacy's Place to the south, 1704 Sycamore Road, is about 400 feet away. Should be noted that under the current UDO regulations, a non-conforming use can be replaced by another one if it's reestablished within six months after leaving. But the applicant would like to do is, even beyond that time, is have the ability for a video gaming establishment to be at their location, and they would still meet all the requ, have to meet all the requirements for a video gaming establishment, get a special use permit. The only exception would be that they could be within 500 feet of another video gaming establishment. Some of the other conditions are recommended that were discussed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, a no trespass and traffic enforcement agreement with the owner, to require common areas surveillance, also recommendations that no sales or pawning of firearms on the subject site, no outside storage. In addition, the commission recommendation, they had the hearing on September 5th, and the commission did recommend approval by a vote of five, or six to zero. One member was absent. They did approve some development standards and additions. Again, the pawn shop would be a permitted use, the video gaming would be able to go forward. Anyone's in the future beyond the six months would have to meet all the requirements for a video gaming establishment. Only exception is the distance separation of 500 feet. Mentioned the sales of firearms not allowed, no outside storage. Any redevelopment on the property in the future, since it's a planned development, we'd get a little more authority in future development. If that does occur in the building, there's none planned, they would have to come back with amend the ordinance and go through, submit the necessary plans, and go through the Planning and Zoning Commission and Council. There are some waivers to the UDO that we've put in here based on the existing site. Again, they're not proposing any expansion that relates to setbacks, site coverage, and landscaping. A few cleanup items, they have to add a handicap sign on the west side of the building, and also clean up a landscape island on the northeast side of the building. The applicant has agreed to all these conditions, and they have been incorporated in the development agreement that's attached to the ordinance. We did receive two citizen response forms, one from Steve Irving of 1826 Sycamore Road, and also from the Kishawaki Country Club, both indicating their support of the rezoning. At the hearing on September 5th, we did have two people speak, a resident, Barry Wolf, at 1221 Sycamore Road, indicating his support, as we'd also received from Derek Ibera. He's a manager of Charlie's, indicating his support for the changes. The financial impact will be pretty strong, and they're estimating the applicant, annually it will generate an excess of about $500,000 in sales in the first year. So staff is recommending approval of the ordinance as presented. We did get a waiver from the applicant, Dave Franzine, who was in the audience in the back. If you have any questions for him, he did request waiver of second reading. And the commission did recommend approval at a unanimous level, so.
Thank you, Dan. We have a motion on the floor, a second, that we approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwhort?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Make the motion.
Motion passes. Excuse me?
I'd like to make a motion in the way of the second reading.
And approve.
And approve.
It's been moved that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance, that motion made by Alderman Fagan, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Discussion, Alderman Verbic.
Mr. Franzine, thank you for your continued investment in DeKalb. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call.
Markwhort?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item number five, omnibus, omnibus approval of ordinances 2018-052 through 2018-061, proposing the establishment of backup special service areas in the city of DeKalb, Illinois, for Fatties and Culvers, Popeyes, University Village, University Plaza, First Rockford Nelson, Casey's, Cornerstone, Sonic, Bandit's Castle, and 1114 Blackhawk Road. This is first reading. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. Speaking of this item is our city attorney, Dean Frieders.
Thank you, Mayor. This proposes the establishment of backup special service areas for each of the developments that are proposed. They are contemplated for each of these by virtue of the development agreements that were approved at the time that the projects went forward. So taking a step back several years, we looked at ways we could improve the development process, that we could provide a source of funding to ensure that properties were properly maintained over a longer period of time, especially as we went into areas of higher intensity of development that are installing underground stormwater detention or other facilities that have the potential to require long-term maintenance. We looked at implementing a backup special service area for commercial developments, for redevelopments of property, to provide the city with a long-term funding mechanism to address long-term property maintenance issues. Fundamentally, if a property owner fails to maintain their property, the city would give them notice and expect that the property owner would resolve that. If they failed to do so, the city would have the right to enter upon the property and perform maintenance itself, and recover the cost of that by levying a tax in the form of the special service area tax against the property. These SSAs are dormant. They are created, but they are not utilized, and no levy for them is passed unless and until we get to the point in time that there's a developer or owner default. At that point in time, the only action required to activate them, after giving the owner notice and an opportunity to fix the issue themselves, would be passing an annual tax levy to levy the taxes. So they're created, they go on the tax roll, but there's no tax bill associated with them unless and until the developer fails to maintain their property. In each one of these instances, the, the affected property owners have consented to the creation of the SSA, they've executed a waiver of objection to the SSA. So this is a formal process of creating it. What we are proposing is this ordinance tonight that would formally start the clock on creating the SSAs. We would have a public hearing scheduled for the second meeting in October, and these would come back likely at the second meeting in November for consideration of approval if the council is supportive of them. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions or any comments on this particular omnibus ordinance?
Just one quick.
Yeah, Alderman Fanouken.
Just one quick question, Council. I mean, I know where all these areas are, you know, and they're pretty fairly identifiable by their name, but other than the first. and they're pretty fairly identifiable by their name, but other than the First Rockford Nelson, maybe you just would elaborate what property that is.
Sure. The First Rockford Nelson, that's the triangular-shaped property up along the bike path that was developed with the physical therapy and the dentist on the, I guess you'd say, the northwest side of Sycamore Road across from Target.
Yeah, I know. Well, and like I said, I understood that, but in case somebody else was listening, didn't know what it was. Thank you.
And each one of the properties in the backup are identified by their general location and area map and a legal description.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finoukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Smith? Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight i.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Dean.
Are you looking for a motion to waive second reading and approve?
We would request that, yes.
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Finoukin, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finoukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan? Has, has Alderman Fagan recused himself?
I think he went to the bathroom. Do we, do we, what do we do, Dean? Do we wait for him?
We would just pass over, Mayor.
I beg your pardon?
We would just pass over that individual.
We could just pass over?
Proceed with the vote.
Okay. And the next person on your list is?
You, Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven i.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dean. Thank you.
I'm hanging around.
Oh, you're gonna hang around for this next one. Okay. I'm sorry. Number six, resolution 2018-129, conditionally approving an intergovernmental agreement with DeKalb County pertaining to sales tax sharing. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Jacobson, seconded by Alderman Noriko. And once again, city attorney Dean Frieders will speak to this item.
Thank you, Mayor. As the councilists aware, going back to last October-November timeframe, we began discussions as a part of the preparation of the FY18 budget, discussing the impact of the current intergovernmental agreements between the city and the county for the sharing of certain sales tax for certain properties in the city. As those sales tax agreements are currently configured, the city is sharing 1 and 1/4% of our home rule sales tax with the county, and the city had contemplated the consequences of terminating those agreements or action that could be taken, and what the impact on both taxing districts would be. Through those discussions, Mayor Smith and Alderman Jacobson led a direct elected-to-elected series of meetings to discuss the ramifications of this for both parties, and to explore the ways that we could continue to reinforce our positive relationship with DeKalb County, and engage in some projects that are beneficial to both parties. And that's what this contemplates. So in short, through this agreement, the city would be committing to continue to share its 1 and 1/4% sales tax. The city's committing it would not reduce that sales tax or reduce the revenue going to the county as a result of that. The county's reciprocating and agreeing to share its current sales tax rate. Both parties are indicating that if either party should ever increase their sales tax, they're not obligated to share anything beyond the current percentage rate that's being shared. So if the city's rate went up, the city would not be obligated to share beyond the 1 and 1/4%. In addition, the county has supported the use of federal funds that could be allocated through DSATs for a pavement overlay as a maintenance project on Peace Road between Interstate 88 and Route 38. There is a local share for that project, and the county would contribute up to $156,000 to cover that local share. They would also provide civil engineering services for both the design and construction observation of that. So they're providing both a cash contribution and an in-kind contribution towards that project. For future phases of the Peace Road improvement from Guerilla Road all the way up to the railroad overpass north of 38, it's contemplated that all phases of engineering for that could cost up to $800,000. The county would make a contribution of up to $230,000 to cover the Phase 1 engineering for that. That Phase 1 engineering is contemplated to be completed by a third-party engineering consultant selected by the city. The critical part of doing the Phase 1 engineering is we would know the total project scope and cost, and we'd be in a position that we could pursue state or federal grants. Until you have that aspect of the engineering done, it's very challenging to go out and be eligible for projects that require something that's shovel-ready. If the Phase 1 is done and we know the whole project scope, then there's a potential that Phase 2 and Phase 3 engineering and actual construction could be grant-eligible, particularly if we can bundle that with a development project in Park 88. So again, on that, the county would be contributing up to $230,000 for that Phase 1 engineering. In the event that we undertake interim Peace Road improvements between now and when the final ultimate Peace Road configuration is constructed, the county would provide construction observation services for that as an in-kind service donation. The city is proposing to reconstruct Tremblay Road from Annie Glidden West to our corporate limits in either 2019 or 2020. The county would provide construction observation services for that as an in-kind service. We're also aware that there's a likelihood for the need for collaboration on future Peace Road improvements, and the county has agreed they would continue discussions with the city regarding how both parties can meaningfully participate in that. And then we've included certain boilerplate indemnity language that both parties would like to see in any of the construction agreements that come out of this grant funding. We do indicate in the title of it that it is conditional approval. That conditional approval is because we're still working on some final details with the county and one other intergovernmental agreement that we anticipate will be coming forward. So the conditional approval is conditioned on the city within 60 days, one, approving another IGA with the county, and two, ratifying this agreement. The separate IGA with the county would relate to the county's provision of the emergency radio system. As the council may recall, the city has purchased certain radios for our first responders that are going to be compatible with the county's digital radio platform. We're also working through the ETSB to install new dispatch stations, new dispatch platforms in our telecommunications center at the police station. Those are going to be essentially a mirror image of new stations being installed at the county's facility. So we're looking at an IGA to wrap up the ability to have CAD-to-CAD, computer-to-dispatch, center-to-computer, to dispatch center communications between our two dispatch centers, such that if one goes down, the other one can immediately pick up. So if the county had an issue with their dispatch center, or if we had an issue with ours, the other agency would be able to resume dispatching for themselves and for, in our case, for example, we could take over the county's dispatch seamlessly. If we receive a call for them errantly, we can transfer it to them seamlessly. We'd also contemplate the county continuing to provide and maintain their digital radio infrastructure that's necessary for our portable radios to work. So we are working through the details of that. Fundamentally, I think the parties have agreed to all of the elements that are to be included in that, but we didn't have it complete for the time for this agenda. So this is a conditional approval of the master IGA, and we'd be coming back in the next 60 days with a separate IGA.
I like the idea of that 60-day window, and that's good. Any comments regarding this resolution, please? Alderman Noriko.
I'd like to direct this question actually to Alderman Jacobson. No, I'm not gonna attack you. The, my reading of this, it appears that this is not necessarily an even agreement. And, but I realize I'm looking at it through the city's eyes. So my question to you is, since you sat in on the negotiations, step by step by step, are you convinced this is the best deal you can get, we can get, for the city with the county at this point? And I realize that there's a value to having a good working relationship with the county, and that probably figured into the discussions. But, you know, I, I just have a somewhat uncomfortable feeling, and I, and I'm gonna depend upon your expertise, David.
Again, the genesis of this goes way back well beyond all of our times. Anyone in the room, in reality, in setting down and having the discussion, understanding intimately we're our side of the agreement, and what we believed what we could do, and believing in that course of action was a possibility, and having the discussions with Jerry, and having the discussions with staff, I think the biggest question or the biggest hurdle was, yes, we can, but what will it cost us on the back end? Again, going into a protracted lawsuit with one of our significant partners in the community could cost us time, resources, money, all of those things that, again, you'd hope to avoid in most situations. Drilling down and calling down the list of the people that were in the room 20 and 25 years ago, and luckily having them in my Rolodex to be able to reach out to, to understand what some of the discussions at that time were, what some of the agreements were, what some of the understandings were when that was drafted. Again, what it came back to was poorly worded contracts that were very vague and left both sides of the agreement exposed to a lawsuit. So understanding what it took to get us here, again, this was several dozen meetings with the electeds, and I certainly appreciate the willingness of Mark Pietrowski and John Frieders and Tracy Jones that came to those meetings to sit down and hammer it out. Again, obviously, when you put staff in a room, both sides fight for their side and fight for, for their point of view, and that's appreciated, obviously, being put into that situation. But to see the level of understanding that both sides came to, again, neither side is entirely happy with, with an agreement, but understanding going forward, we make sure the liabilities, if any, when, the liability for a lawsuit, the cost of lawsuit, are eliminated. We're contributing significant dollars to our long-term road funding, whether they're soft costs or hard costs. And again, there's both in this agreement. We're taking out several of the informal handshake agreements that we've had over the years with the county, and formalizing those. Again, I think that's the better way of doing business for both sides of an agreement. Understanding all of those things, understanding that the county as a partner in these things, and now a vested partner, can likely have significant more grant opportunities in some of these things than we would have had on our own. Understanding that we've, instead of souring that relationship, when going into other discussions we're having with intergovernmental agreements and intergovernmental partners, not only was it not soured, but it was strengthened through this process to have everybody in the room, to have everybody basically airing their dirty laundry and saying, what can we do to work together to clean it? To fix longstanding bad agreements. Again, the positives of it for me outweighs the fact that, again, it is a real cost to us. Again, it's the best that I believe we can get at this point, knowing how the negotiations back and forth went.
Well, and, you know, I certainly appreciate, you know, the time and effort you put into it as well, as, you know, the mayor and, you know, Dean. And your response seems reasonable. It, you know, allays my concerns. It gets back to the position. Is it perfect? No. But we aren't likely to have Happy Valley here, you know, and we at least have, you know, preserved the relationship. And it sounds like there's a possibility that we actually improved the relationship. And, you know, relationships are important to me. So thank you, you know, for your time and your response.
This was a lengthy process, and it's been alluded to the fact that Alderman Jacobson and the mayor took part in this to a great extent. Believe me, the lion's share of that was with Alderman Jacobson. Alderman Jacobson not only used his historical perspective on this over a near eight-year period as an alderman, but I must say his native intelligence as it relates to some of the ins and outs of some of the language. And David, I appreciate it. I really do. And the citizens of the city of DeKalb ought to be very, very thankful to you for working this out. I realize that we're asking to approve this conditionally based on what we hope will be a very successful 60-day period during which we can get an intergovernmental agreement on the radio situation. Now, having said that, are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Finoukin.
I also have a question for Alderman Jacobson. Dave, you still use a Rolodex? Thank you.
I don't know if I've ever actually owned a Rolodex per se, but the world of digital communication.
Okay. Any further comments? If not, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finoukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight i.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Dean. Item number seven, resolution 2018-130, authorizing the second renewal of the Voluntary Action Center Transit Provider Contract for a one-year term from October 1, 2018, through September 30, 2019, with an allocation of state fiscal year 2019 state and federal grant funds in an amount not to exceed $3,485,609. And I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finoukin, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Speaking to this now is our Public Works Director, Tim Holdeman.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. It's my pleasure to introduce to you tonight the city's new transit manager, Marcus Cox. Marcus is a resident of DeKalb and a graduate of NIU. He has been in transit for about 10 years. He's done all of the operational functions of a transit operation, from bus operator to safety training, to operations manager, to his latest assignment, which was general manager for TransDev, who is the transit service provider for the Husky Line. So he's been running Husky Line for the last three years. TransDev, you may be familiar, you may not. They are a very large corporation of about 20,000 employees. They serve, they provide transit services to over 200 cities throughout the United States. And TransDev management had selected Marcus as one of the three managers in their organization, young managers, in a, in an elite group the way forward. So his credentials are very high, and we thought, what better way to get him ingrained than to jump into this VAC contract? And so, without further ado, Marcus Cox.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, Mayor and council. It is my privilege to be here before you this evening. On behalf of the Public Works Department, I would like to recommend the second renewal of the Voluntary Action Center Transit Service Provider Agreement. The initial agreement was approved on September 26, 2016, and included one base year with three one-year options. The first option year was approved by council in September 2017, and will conclude this upcoming Sunday, September 30, 2018. The proposed option year would extend from Monday, October 1, through September 30, 2019. One final option year would remain on the contract beyond that time. As you may be familiar, the full transit integration amongst VAC, Husky Line, and the city of DeKalb takes effect on January 1, 2019. Throughout the past year, VAC has remained committed to the success of an integrated system, including the introduction of a revised Route 18, which you may know as the former Green Line, as well as establishing a productive which you may know as the former Green Line, as well as establishing a productive, excuse me, including the introduction of a revised Route 18, as well as establishing a productive partnership with Husky Line to create the newly designed core network, including added weekend bus service that commenced on Saturday, September 1, 2018. Aside from Route 18, VAC would continue to operate their door-to-door paratransit service, as well as the Route 21, the former Blue Line, which goes to Sycamore, as well as their Kewalki College Route. Both VAC and the city of DeKalb staff have agreed to continue to work together to pursue improvements to the transit service provided by VAC. Funding for this agreement would be provided through the State of Illinois Downstate Operating Assistance Program, the Federal Transit Administration Urbanized Area Formula Funding 5307, and would include local match provided by the Voluntary Action Center. The State of Illinois Downstate Operating Assistance Program, along with the FTA Urbanized Area Formula Funding, cover approximately 75% of the total annual, annual operating costs, with the other 25% coming from local match sources, which are given and provided by the Voluntary Action Center. Historically, the Illinois Department of Transportation Downstate Operating Assistance Program funds have been delayed between May and November. However, we are doing our part to ensure a proactive approach with the state of Illinois as not to hinder the process, and will communicate any concerns that may impede the ability to distribute payment to VAC throughout the year. It is our request that the council approve, or choose to approve, the second of the three renewals with the Voluntary Action Center from October 1, 2018, through September 30, 2019. With that being said, I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Marcus. It's great to have you with us. It really is.
Thank you.
I've had an opportunity to work with you a little bit and see you at some of the DeKalb-Sycamore area transportation meetings, along with Alderman Fanouken, and, and I'm just glad that you're with us. Okay, with that, any other comments or questions of Marcus? If not, roll call.
I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike. I didn't see your hand.
I'm sorry. It just struck me a little slow. How does this play into the RFP thing that we're doing for the new provider? Is this any overlapping?
In terms of overlapping, this is technically separate. This contract began effective as of 10/1, so October 1. The new provider, in which it's still being determined, that RFP would take effect January 1. However, they would still work together and it would still both be overseen from the city's perspective. Operations are separate, yes.
And the routes would be separate?
Yes, sir. So the Husky Line routes would be run as Husky Line and TransVAC routes would still operate the same.
I'm confused.
I am too.
Alderman Fanouken?
I hear, Mike, maybe, maybe I can help flesh this out a little bit. So the other contract that we're waiting on the final determination, who's going to be the provider? But the integrated services are going to begin more in, in impact on the first of the year. But they're still going to be the two separate providers, and that's how this integrated transportation system was set up to begin with, with the long-term progress of them working together more and more as, as the years go by. So over the next couple of years, you're going to see more fully integrated transit system with the dilloide paratransit continuing to be operated primarily by VAC and the transit service primarily operated by the Husky Line or whoever that provider is. Does that help?
Sort of. I, I just want to...
Yeah.
I guess, I guess my understanding was a little bit different. I guess I didn't realize that the consolidation was going to be quite so prolonged. Because it still seems like we had two systems.
Yes. So, the way that I would make an analogy is if you had two entertainers and they had their own managers, they would have their own show, their own gig. They may be playing in the same city, but they've got their own thing. That was our old system. Today, we have two that are wearing the same jerseys. They're on the same team. They have one manager, the city. And so, they are coordinated, they are cooperating, and we haven't even named the second one yet. So, right now, the current Husky provider has agreed to be that teammate, but we haven't even selected that permanent, long-term Husky service provider. So, the consolidation has, has yet to occur. There has been agreement by both parties that there could be a half a step in that direction, and that's what we did. But the actual consolidation is not going to occur until we get that second contractor. So there would be TransVAC and a second contractor, which will be named on January 1. So that will be kind of when the, the full consolidation begins.
So it's still a work in progress, frankly?
Yes.
Yes. Mike, does that answer your question?
It is an answer. It's not... And I, and I totally understand that, how that works, and coming from that situation, because... I mean, I understand how Husky Line works, and I understand how that works because I did most of your jobs in a previous life. Back in the day.
When you were young and...
I was young then, but, um... Okay. Yeah, and I totally understand it, and I just, um, I guess I was hoping that in the process, it would be faster and there would be quicker savings, because... But I, I understand that there's three different entities that you're getting together and a couple of government things and so on and so forth.
And one of the critical milestones of...
Still duplicating everything.
Well, one of the critical milestones that we could not change was the term of the Husky contract. So that contract had to play to its end, which is December 31. And it won't be until January 1 that we could name the new contractor. So, we, we were locked in with that.
Okay. So I guess I was understanding that the new contractor would be an overarching contractor?
No.
And not still one contractor and one contractor?
Two contractors, both reporting to the city. That's the difference. Under Marcus as the transit manager.
Okay.
Okay? Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markhor?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight-I.
Motion passes. Thank you, Tim and Marcus.
Thank you.
Moving right along, item number eight, Resolution 2018-131, authorizing a modified intergovernmental agreement with Northern Illinois University for shared implementation of a downtown wireless network. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. Speaking to this item is Information Technology Director, Mark Thorson.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is the modified intergovernmental agreement with Northern Illinois University that is modifying the agreement that was approved and signed back on September 27 of 2017. At that time, the downtown Wi-Fi project was anticipated to work in a certain direction. And as we discussed before on the previous meetings, we ran into some issues with the infrastructure that was in play there. In order to resolve this and provide us the ability to move forward with a Wi-Fi project and also continue to work on the infrastructure, infrastructure issue, the engineering company, VAC Inc., came up with an alternative solution, which we then went forward with. At the time, we had discussed being able to have Northern Illinois University as a partner in this, provide a contribution toward this project. Part of the, part of this agreement, in addition to some of the terms have changed, we spoke about that the city would take ownership of the infrastructure, the access points, as opposed to NIU, which was outlined in the original agreement. So this modifies that, as well as some of the other items that, such as cameras in the downtown as part of this project. The existing infrastructure won't be able to manage that as well, but we can always talk about that in subsequent agreements at a later time when we're able to resolve the infrastructure issues. This, as part of this agreement as well, this also provides that avenue for NIU to contribute toward this project in the amount of $13,631.06. I also wanted to note that there was some public discussion about the original fiber optic run that was, that, that we are experiencing issues with over the last winter. And staff worked with, found the original contract and reviewed it. And we also went out and spoke to people who were, who were there at the time, and also engineers in, in that deal directly with construction in this manner. Everyone seemed to think that finding any culpability by the contractor almost six years ago would be very difficult. So, I wanted to make sure that, that point was addressed, that we had actually gone through and researched that. Just to note that the total cost to the city through VAC Inc. for this project was $29,818.06. And this modified agreement obviously allows that to be offset by the $13,000 noted earlier. And with that, I have any, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So splitting the cost, basically, yes, okay. Alderman Fagan?
We've already spent the money, right? The 29, we're just getting the 13 back.
Exactly.
All right.
Any further comments or questions? It's been moved and seconded that we approve this resolution. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markhor?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight-I.
Thank you. So moved. Thank you, Mark. Item number nine, Resolution 2018-132, authorizing an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Frieder's Law LLC. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Interim City Manager Molly Talkington will speak to this item.
Good evening. Currently, our city attorney, Dean Frieders, is responsible for general counsel for the city. We also had an attorney for our tax increment finance district, and we have one for labor and bargaining. So with those three contracts, the city kind of has the full scope of our legal services. When we're looking at our current services provided by general counsel, Dean Frieders, we have significantly asked him to increase some of the workload that was not designed in the initial contract that was worked out for him. So at the beginning, he started with the city in 2012, and it was $17,000 a month. There was one year, the following year, 2% increase to that contract. Since then, for five years, there's been no cost of living increases, or an adjustment to the fee for services provided by Dean Frieders till now. And the request today is to increase this one time to $19,000, which is approximately, it's a little less than if we had done 2% kind of adjustments over those five years. That would have been about $19,500. But this is to increase it to $19,000 mainly to address that we've asked in the very recent months to have Dean Frieders take over our tax increment financing portion of our legal services. And his contract and the amount that's being requested would actually be lower than the amount that we were paying for our prior tax increment financing counsel. The funding for this would not affect the general fund because there are other funding sources that would pay for the incremental difference to the contract. And then also, we did take time recently to look at what legal services cost in our comparable communities. And even with the increase to the $18,000 a month, we're still lower than most of the comparables, and that was on your attachment A. So I'd recommend that council approve an increase to his contract. Any questions?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Alderman Fagan?
So, we're talking about roughly about $1,400 a month additional. And it's less than what we've been paying the current TIF, the former, I should say, the former TIF attorney.
Former TIF, right. The hourly rate for the former TIF attorney would have resulted in more of a higher cost.
My, my feeling, I, I don't have a problem with this. I just want to make sure that where the funds come from, that they come, that, that if it's taken out of TIF, it was worked on TIF.
Correct.
Not just for the sake of taking it out of TIF.
No, we will, as I've discussed with council members and different aspects, we're going to have a more heightened kind of detail approach to what is paid for out of TIF going, from now going forward. And so that will be taken into account. But the amount of work that he's already put into TIF this year is substantial and will probably continue to be higher at this point right now.
Alderman Jacobson?
Looking at the backup, TIF district legal costs, 17, was only about $2,600. What is our average annual, obviously, this year because we're dealing with a new TIF creation and we're looking at some of the old TIF closeout responsibilities and requirements? This year, obviously, there'll be a significant increase in those costs. But have we costed out, say, the last five years of what they've been annually for those costs?
You know, I don't know that. Off the top of my head, I can get back to you. But I do know that because we're going to track time spent on TIF, that, so this year will probably be a more significant amount of time that's paid for out of that funds, it will shift between the different funds. So if he's providing services for the water fund or the general fund, that will shift year to year. Those will be accounted for when we look at how we do our budget projections. And then, of course, how the TIF factors into it. So there is a potential in future years that some of the increase could shift to general fund. But for this year, I don't anticipate the increase will come out of general fund.
Again, my concern is, obviously, we're looking at a one-year time projection, and data on a one-year scale is generally not a good way of looking at data. While I appreciate if there's additional work responsibilities and time that needs to be committed toward a project that we would have paid for anyway by any contractor, I appreciate that that time could be justified as due, especially if it's above and beyond the typical work responsibilities. But again, understanding last year was only $2,600, we haven't even had a discussion of what we're going to do with our non-bargaining unit, all of our employees in city halls. So, again, at the very least, I'd say I would feel much more comfortable breaking it out into a separate cost. So if we decide in the future to go with a different firm or decide that's no longer important, we have that ability without having to come back to a separate vote and strip an employee of their compensation. Again, if we have an internal contractor that's providing that service, and it was a service we were paying for, I could justify, at least in the short term, understanding that that would be additional compensation. Until we have a discussion about non-bargaining unit this year and a discussion of what we look like budget-wise, to do a $20,000 increase in salary, again, it's not a performance issue, it's not in any way I'm questioning the legal advice we get, because I'm not. I think we have very competent legal representation. I think we have, much to the chagrin of many of the people I am close with, very good legal services are being provided to us. The level of access is excellent, especially for, again, a third-party contractor. I have called Dean at 2:00 or 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, and he's gotten right back. I have called Dean at two or three or four in the morning, and he's gotten right back to me, sometimes at three in the morning. And I feel guilty doing that sometimes.
You should.
And I have to preface a lot of my comments with, "Don't call me back tonight, let me know tomorrow," because that is the level of service he does provide and assumes that I want an answer at three-thirty in the morning while I'm thinking about it staring at the ceiling. Again, a twenty thousand dollar increase without looking at it and the bigger picture of what we're doing for the rest of our employees, I would say is a mistake at this point. If we have to pay additional amounts out of TIF that would have gone to a TIF attorney to have that service need met, I would be there to support that.
Any other comments or questions on this? Roll call.
Yes.
Markward?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven-I.
Motion passes. Thank you, Molly. Moving right along, item number ten, Resolution 2018-133, authorizing the issuance of a request for proposals for financial collection services. Collections services. Motion.
So moved.
If I can just briefly interject, this is errantly reflected in the agenda as a resolution. There is not a resolution. This is a request for proposals, so we don't require a motion for this if the council is not inclined to make one.
So it's...
We customarily bring requests for, requests of this nature to the council for discussion and consensus before we...
So this would be an information-only item. Is the council comfortable with Dean simply explaining this without any vote? Okay, thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council is aware, we recently adopted the administrative hearing process, which has been implemented over the past several Mondays and has been very successful thus far. We've also looked holistically at the city's outstanding accounts payable, accounts receivable. We have initiated through the police department and the finance department over the past year participation in the Illinois Debt Recovery Offset Program, the I-Drop program, which allows us access to funds that are otherwise due from the state back to residents that may owe the city funds on parking tickets or other obligations they owe the city. What we're looking at here is a request for proposals for a collection service that specializes in municipal collections that'd be able to aid us across any of our accounts receivable, whether they be administrative hearings, delinquent water bills, or anything else. It could be abatements, it could be anything that we customarily encounter that we currently don't have a great process for collecting. This request for proposal seeks to have qualified companies submit to us proposals for how they would interact, hopefully seamlessly with our new financial software, with our administrative hearing software, such that when a debt becomes due and payable, when it has accrued so many days of past due status, it could automatically be ported into the system for collections activities. We're looking for two types of responses. One would be if they managed the I-Drop submittal for us, and one would be if they did not, because we're interested in proceeding and evaluating both of those opportunities. There are some communities that use a third-party vendor for I-Drop submission, some do not. We want to kind of compare the pros and cons as they propose. We currently have a very good process for the I-Drop submission, but if the vendor manages it, it may reduce our staffing, the demand of staff time for that role. It may also allow for better coordination between more traditional collections activities and submission to I-Drop. We're also very interested in data collection. One of the things we're seeing immediately through the administrative hearing is, on the limited number of cases we've had thus far, we can produce immediate statistics on the number of cases that have been heard, the number of hearings that have been conducted, the number of findings of liable or not, the final costs imposed or not imposed, as it may be. So we want to ensure that as we move forward with this, we have very good objective data that can be provided to council so you can evaluate prospectively the success of administrative hearings or the efficacy of some of our other governmental activities. This request would be issued tomorrow. It would come back to council in a couple council meetings from now with responses from the vendors that are interested in providing this service. We would, as per our usual practice, have a recommendation regarding the most responsive party that we believe will be able to most successfully meet the city's needs. Of note, we are framing this specifically as being based on the collections firm funding their own costs, basically. The city would contemplate passing an ordinance that would impose an administrative cost. Whenever we use a collection agency, we're allowed to recoup that third-party cost. It's typically added on top of whatever you're collecting as a thirty-five percent charge, and the collection agency is responsible for recovering that money and paying themselves. So this would be a zero-out-of-pocket project for the city that should allow us the ability to access and recover revenues that are properly payable to the city and report those revenues back to the council in an objective fashion.
Thank you, Dean. Explaining that RFP, we do not have to vote on this?
Correct.
Are there any questions? If not, thank you very much, Dean.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That completes our agenda tonight, other than reports and communications. And this is the point in the meeting where we ask each of the council members if they have anything to report. We'll also ask staff members in a likewise form. First of all, our first ward alderman, Dave Jacobson.
Two comments tonight. Again, our co-ward meeting between the first and seventh wards is scheduled for Sunday afternoon at Westminster Church on Ingliden Road. Pretty sure I have a three o'clock date for that, but let me just verify that while I'm talking. It'll be an opportunity for first and seventh ward residents and any other residents that would like to attend to come and ask any questions they may have or have any comments that they would like to share. It is three-thirty on Sunday, September thirtieth, at Westminster Church on Ingliden Road. Secondly, I know for the benefit of the audience that doesn't have the visual perspective we do sitting up here in the room, I know that there was some frustration by one of the audience members earlier when some comments were read into the public record. And while I appreciate that we are progressive enough and technologically savvy enough to include some of those comments on the fly at meetings, I think that frustration that's being shared is a greater frustration that's being felt by many people in our community. I know I also had a discussion outside the building prior to coming into the room today with another gentleman that spoke tonight that wanted to make some more pointed comments, and I appreciate that he chose not to do so tonight. The reality we have is in this community, there are large amounts of people that care and dedicate their time and energies and talents and expertise, many of them on a volunteer or well-reduced pay level, to seeing the community succeed, to seeing the community promoted, to seeing the community better itself. And I certainly am one to advocate for open and frank and honest discussion, even when that discussion is sometimes uncomfortable, even when it's sometimes not politically correct in the terms of expedient process. The reality is that the frustration is growing from our otherwise positive community members, that there are many in the community, and not really many, it's a small group in reality, that are not stepping up to do things positively for our community. They're merely attacking every single micromanaged decision that anything at the city, whether it's at the elected level or staff level, is occurring. And it's getting to a point that it's pushing good people. Again, not always people I agree with, not always people that I see the eye-to-eye with on items, but pushing the good people that are pushing positive, moving the ball forward change, to a point where they don't want to contribute anymore, to a point where they are turning very negative on our community and thinking about leaving here. Again, there is a strong need in this community for people to step up. There is a strong reality that things have not always been done right, up on this desk or in this room, or in this building even. If you want to step up and contribute and be part of the change, we welcome you. We've shown this council is the most welcoming and inclusive council that I've seen in my entire time in DeKalb. If you don't and you just want to complain, my patience specifically is very limited. I would imagine many of our staff's patience are wearing, you have a right to your opinion. We would appreciate, if, again, you don't want to help but merely share that opinion, feel free to do so. But don't expect that any of our time or any of the staff's time or our very limited resources will be wasted consoling your pity party. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jacobson. Alderman Finouken.
I just want to remark that I was honored to represent the city last week at the unity march on Thursday. Also, there was interim city manager Molly Talkington, chief Lowry, chief Hicks, and other city staff. And I just want to say it was a well-attended event, and hopefully it continues, leads to continued dialogue between people of different groups.
Thank you. Alderman Markward.
So one of the complaints that I get from people most of the time is, most recently, is the fact that the yard waste dumpsters are gone. I believe that was communicated as part of the whole process, and it was voted on that it was going away. So please take this time to understand that they are gone. They were removed from the contract. And if you heard that all services were going to be the same, except for that, I guess is one of those instances. So just to reiterate that for the public, those are gone.
Thank you. Alderman Fagan.
Alderman Jacobson, I want to thank you for bringing that up today. That was quite noticeable. We've got so many people here in town that work very, very hard, that's proud of this community. And to have someone to be able to hide behind a keyboard, of course, use their name, but not come up in public and be able just to come over through media to let the air out of something that happened over the weekend that was so beneficial to the DeKalb. And you're absolutely right. I mean, we, you're not only talking about people that want to do well for DeKalb and get tired of being knocked down, but you're also talking about people that want to run for an office. And we get inundated by, I like your comment, pity party, that they ridicule everything that anybody does that represents DeKalb, not only, you know, elected officials, but I'm also talking about everybody that works really hard here in the city. And be able to have somebody come along and shoot off an email, I think we should take a look at it if we're going to be doing this in the future, because I don't see any good coming from it. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Fagan. Alderman Noriko.
I have two announcements. The first one fits in with our theme of respect. There's going to be a special film at the DeKalb Library. The film is The Sultan and the Saint. It's an award-winning film about Muslim-Christian peace. And it recounts the peacemaking effort between the ruler of the Muslim empire and Francis of Assisi during the Fifth Crusade eight hundred years ago. It reminds us that goodness and respect can change hearts. The film will be shown October third from seven to eight-thirty, again, at the DeKalb Library. There will be refreshments, and discussion will follow the viewing of the film. So I really encourage people to come see it. I've viewed it, and it's really enlightening. I also want to, on another note, remind motorists to be careful of pedestrians stepping off the curb in the crosswalk. I've recently heard from several constituents who have been almost clipped or hit or thrown aside. We can't afford to lose anybody or have anybody hurt. So just be careful as you're making turns and barreling down the street. Thank you.
Alderman Verbig.
Just to again applaud the property owners, residents, renters, business owners of the sixth ward for participating in a very important decision tonight on a development. And even though the vote did not go the majority of the sixth ward in their feeling their way, per se, I just wanted to applaud the process, applaud staff, your assistance along the way. I learned a lot along the way that we truly benefit when we do have these proposals for developments is informing the public upfront as much as possible, that it really lends itself to an improved process for council decision-making.
Thank you, Alderman Verbig. Alderman Favor.
I was just going to, again, congratulate the DeKalb Corn Classic on a successful new race in DeKalb, and I look forward to next year as well with that and the Taste of DeKalb.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments. Tonight, this council acted on a variety of items, many of which had dollar signs attached to them. As your mayor, I'm very cognizant of not only what we're spending money on, but on what we're not devoting enough dollars to. The balancing act is not an easy one. Over the next several weeks, we'll be spending considerable time on our budget process. I encourage citizens to let us know your thoughts as we navigate through those numbers. Finally, over the weekend, I joined three of our city folks at the annual Illinois Municipal League Conference. They were Alderman Dave Jacobson, along with deputy city clerk Ruth Scott, and management intern Jason Blumenthal. I was so impressed at the variety of subjects at the three-day session, everything from technology to TIF, from citizen comment to public-private partnerships, and sessions devoted to finance, water systems, wind towers. Personally, I was excited to continue conversations with mayors of many municipalities, as we shared our experiences with declining state revenues, increasing pension obligations, and why we have more migration out of, not into, this state. Here in DeKalb, we simply cannot treat ourselves as an island, and the need to collaborate is more evident in 2018 than ever before. This council is up to that challenge. Help us to grow a better DeKalb. Thank you. Our city clerk, Lynn Fizikas.
Yes, I just want to say that I'm very excited about Deputy Ruth Scott's having gone to the IML conference. We're already talking about how she might share some of that information with me, and maybe next year I'll go. I also want to make a comment on the phone calls that I've received. Not a week has gone by without a phone call or an email or two from people who call the city clerk first, no matter what the subject, the topic, who they want to talk to. Sometimes it's complaints, sometimes it's for information. I'm glad to help route them to the correct person. I anticipate that I will continue doing that for as long as is needed. I also want to make, finally, my comment. I know that there were some negative comments made during part of the meeting, and I do want to say that, just speaking for myself as a person who's in an elected position, though I was appointed, that I do expect that I'm going to take a few slings and arrows from the general public and that I plan not to play the victim as far as I possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. City attorney, Dean Frieders.
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to the Taste of DeKalb and the Corn Classic, so the planning process for that started in March of this year when the event organizers came forward and proposed a different format for that event and proposed a different way of regulating the sale of alcoholic beverages at a public event here in the city. That was something that every department participated in the discussions of, and we were fortunate to work with some... were fortunate to work with some very thoughtful event organizers and some very responsible vendors that they selected to work with, and that process was very successful. We continue to work with parties that want to come forward and propose events of that nature, kind of change the way that special events are conducted here in the city of DeKalb. What we're finding through that process is that bringing them forward to council for consideration when they're on that kind of a scale is something that's beneficial, engaging all of your thoughts on them and enhancing the public awareness of them. We are learning from each one of these events that's conducted, and we're looking at how they should be viewed in terms of whether it's appropriate to recommend updates to our city code generally, but at the present time, if there are organizations that are interested in having those kind of special events, we're happy to work with them, we're happy to bring it forward and get it to council where it can be reviewed and considered. And we're very thankful, again, that the vendors were very organized in their approach to this, and it was a very well-run event without any hitches. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Alder, interim city manager Molly Talkington.
Thank you, Mayor. We had quite a busy week last week. We had the beginning of our budget workshop and the, you know, budget decisions that need to be made and what we're looking forward to, kind of working through that together as a group. In light of that, I thought it was very interesting to hear council today say some very nice things about staff and support the work that's done here, because it's very difficult to sit through budget workshops, and I think it's going to get harder for staff as we hear about budget reductions and the potential of, you know, lowering or not giving increases and stuff like that. So it's very important for staff to hear that we're still doing a job and you support us, so having that feedback is very beneficial for our group. So I appreciate that council's done that. I also appreciate all the hard work that council's been doing with staff, because we've brought you into quite a few topics recently and had a lot of assistance in the trip agreement or the sales tax sharing agreement with the mayor. Jacobson have been one example of that, so that was really good. It was the mayor's birthday over the weekend, so happy birthday.
Thank you.
So that's on a lighter note. And then, actually, the last thing to wrap it up that was really important last week is we had our surveillance call with Moody's about our bond rating, and I will find out tomorrow morning where we stand, so I'm anxiously waiting to see where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Interim assistant city manager Ray Munch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a very brief update on the city manager search process. I talked to Heidi Borhees this afternoon. City's continuing to receive applicants for the city manager, and Heidi is currently at the International City County Management Association Conference in Baltimore, Maryland, actively recruiting on behalf of the city at that conference. The application period will be open until October 8th, and if anyone is looking for more information, there are links on the homepage of the city's website that will take you to GovHRUSA's webpage where the position information is available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Our police chief, Gene Lowry.
No report.
Our fire chief, Eric Hicks.
No report.
And our community development director, Joellen Charlton.
No report.
And our public works director, Tim Holdeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind our residents that they need to put their trash out by 6:00 a.m. in the morning. The new operation for LRS can change the time at which the carts are picked up at your house. I've had a number of residents call, and they were surprised to learn that the time that the trash was being picked up had changed. So please put them out by 6:00 a.m. Thank you.
And our IT director, Mark Thorson.
Thank you, Mayor. One quick update that I would like to let the public know about, the website redesign public workshop notifications will be going out shortly. We're trying to advertise as much as possible on this, so we're going to have a little blurb on the water bills that are going out, as well as newspaper and website and some other mediums. They're going to begin on the week of the 22nd, and we're going to have several of them in different time slots, different days, and also different locations, to try and give as many people an opportunity to participate as possible. And the actual website update process is, by agreement, going to begin February of 2019. So the object is, is we would like to collect as much information as possible from the public. As a staff perspective, we're going to go through the website page by page and start determining where there's redundancies, where there's things that can be condensed, and try and make sure that the process moving to the new platform will make it as good of a user experience as we can possibly make it. Thank you.
Alluding to what Alderman Jacobson had said earlier, this is a perfect opportunity for those who have been critical of our website to come forward, to make their suggestions, to get and be part of the solution, if you will, not part of the problem. There is no executive session scheduled for this evening. I'd entertain a motion for, to adjourn this regular meeting of the city council.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Jacobson, seconded by Alderman Markwart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.